Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Our last pastor, Byron Fair, to lead us in our prayer. And from our prayer, we'll go right into the pledge and we've got a roll call. Of course, we have some special presentations. Pastor?
Let's pray together. God, as we come to you tonight, we first just thank you for allowing us to be here. But we do come with heavy hearts, God. It's no surprise tonight that we come with grieving in our bodies and our souls. And God, we come seeking you for guidance and strength. God, the city of Northport lost a great man over the past week. And God, we just ask for comfort in this time. We ask that you would bring comfort to the council, God, and to the mayor. God, to Dennis's family and friends. God, strengthen them and allow them to rest in your presence. God, allow this council and mayor to continue to see your wisdom and your vision that you have for the city of Northport and everything that they do. God, grant them peace and understanding throughout their days. We ask this in Christ's most holy and precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rose, call roll, please.
President Logan.
President.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Hogg.
Here.
If you have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you. Got some special presentations and allow the Honorable Mayor Donna Ehren to kind of lead us in those. Mayor?
(inaudible) First of all, we'd like to, again, stand our due condolences to you all for the loss that you've had. And we have to thank you for your love. You were the family man, and I know that you were missing terribly. And as of short six months with Dennis, who has become like one of the chicks of hers, who's become like a family, still attached to her. He was a team player, he was always so excited about serving his students, and he did a good job there. You could see him out all the time, involved. And he was really involved in what was good for the city of Northport. He wanted to make sure that when our tenure was up, that the time we had here, we let the city better than he would have to. He was a true champion of Northport, of district one. And like you, we should miss him terribly. We should miss his enthusiasm, we should miss his dedication, we should miss his always willing to walk and do anything that we wanted to do. He was a team player, we can have asked him, if I could be more, we are as strong teams except for us were strong. And it's just so sad that we will be missing one of our leaders, our team. He was a fine man, a good man, and he loved his family, very much. So tonight, we would prepare these participants for lots of cards. His life's over. He's my lover. And his picture. And I do look great with a chocolate on my face.
That's fine, thank you.
And I'm gonna let some of this go.
You know, Eric, I actually, and I'm gonna tell a quick story because Dennis liked a quick joke. We're campaigning. You get to know a lot of people. You get to know the people who you're gonna be working with. And as during the campaign season would go along, you got to really know people's family. So Dennis would always call me and he says, hey, I'm at my office. I said, where's your office? You hadn't even got, you hadn't got an office yet. He said, I'm at the Waffle House. I said, which one is that one? He said, the one they just built. He said, it's more cleaner. He said, we gotta get the grease on the, we gotta put the grease on the walls for it to taste good. You know, most recently, he called me. And if it's issues that are specific, Dennis had a good way of trying to figure out how it affected the employees. He was very in tune of employee relations, which in making the commitments and appointments to different committees, it just fit Dennis. He was more of an employee's employee, just because of his years at the plant, working with guys. So I always remember Dennis would say, hey, I'm at my office if you need me, and it's nine o'clock. So I said, are you at City Hall? He says, no, I'm at the one next to the, to the gas station. So I know the favorite meal he always ate was an All-Star. So big decisions, we always had an All-Star and a smothering chunk. So Eric, you know, I've been knowing you for a good little while and got to know his family. Through the political process, Dennis was one of those guys where he, he really loved his family. He understood the community that he served, and he was one of the biggest county high guys that you were gonna meet. So you know, the adage, true blue, that really rang with Dennis. So I'm always proud to have called him a friend, a work colleague, and of course, you know, we've made new friends with his family. So you always have a, a family here in Northport. So again, your loss is just as great, and we just feel with you guys and thoughts and prayers going to you guys. So I know he is, he's looking down on us and making sure we, we do the right thing for Northport. So again, I'm surely gonna miss him, and I know you guys really do too. So thank you, guys, for allowing us to take part in this process with you guys. Thank you.
I met Dennis back in 1986 at the tire plant. He was already working there. And the times that I seen him in the big plant, he always had a crowd around him. He was always in labor relations. He was always standing up for the employees. And he always had a smile on his face, always, always smiling everywhere he went because he enjoyed what he did. And we got, we got back together, you know, a year before the election, and we spoke almost every night. And, and the main reason I like to call and talk to him was if I had a little funny or something to tell him, he had a smile and a laugh that was so infectious that, something I'll never forget. That his laugh, I mean, it just, it just stuck with you. And he, he cared about all the residents in Northport, not only his district. He cared about all these employees, every employee. He was, he was, he's a true servant of this city, and we're gonna miss him greatly.
I just wanna share something real quick. You know, the way I'm gonna remember Dennis, last Monday night, we were actually playing Taylor and Shay's Little Girl and T-Ball. I won't tell you the outcome of the game, but it wasn't good. But I'm coaching first base, and I hear this voice behind me say, you know, man, don't let anybody in this park. And I turn around and it's Dennis, just a big grin on his face. And that's kind of the way it's been working with him the past few months. He's just been incredible and very, gonna miss him a lot.
You know, I've only known Dennis for probably the last six months, but Dennis is one of the type of individuals that even though that you haven't known him for a very long time, you feel like you've known him your whole life. He was just one of those individuals that you'll never forget. The, the things that Dennis and I were working on with the city, I will make sure that we continue to carry those out. And his legacy will always be here in Northport. So from, from the bottom of my heart, I sincerely express my condolences.
We want you to know that anything that you all need ever, we are here to support you, and we will be here for you. And thank you for sharing Dennis with us for this short time. I've known Dennis and Terry since they were in high school, so I feel like I've grown up with them. But thank you for coming and being here.
I was gonna let Robbie do that laugh Dennis did. I'm no, I can't do it, but that picture right there says a thousand words because he had that, he had that laugh in his, in his, in his heart, I guess, because we're just talking about that with that laugh. So again, I echo what the mayor said. We, we really want you guys to keep being a part of this family. So really thank you, guys. So thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Item five is approval of the agenda. Of course, we had a short pre-meeting, very short agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item 7A1 is a second reading of an ordinance rezoning eight point seven acres located on Baptist Campground Road from RS 35 to C 3. Mr. Stevens, again, this is residential, single-family to general commercial. I think it had a favorable recommendation.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance granting that rezoning?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a second reading of an ordinance annexing one acre located at the 300 block of Hunter Creek Lane. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, this is the same piece of property as the previous item. Received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission and as a rezoning request from the initial AG agricultural to single-family zoning.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg. Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a second reading of an ordinance annexing one acre located at the 300 block of Hunter Creek Lane. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, this comes as a recommendation from the planning commission. It's an additional hundred feet to add to a residential home site for construction of a single-family home.
Thank you. Is that come with a favorable recommendation, right?
Yes, sir, it did.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance annexing that one acre located at 300 block of Hunter Creek Lane?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
New business. Item 8A1 is a first reading of an ordinance declaring the sales tax holiday or the back-to-school holiday again. We've always taken part in this. And out of Ms. Hoffman's office, it moved from in August to the third full weekend in July, so they moved it up a little bit. Is that correct, Ms. Hoffman?
Correct.
All right. There's no, there's no action needed, but I will offer this up for a first reading on item 8A1. Item 8A2 is a first reading of an ordinance annexing 13 acres between Kerwood-Lakewood Drive and Sleepy Valley Road. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, this is a recommendation from the planning commission to annex 13 acres on the east side of 69 between Kerwood-Lakewood Drive and Sleepy Valley Road. The current request is annexation only, but it's potentially for residential development.
All right. Is there someone on council like to offer that up for a first reading?
I'll offer that up for a first reading.
Offered up by Councilman Davis. Item 8A3 is a first reading of an ordinance rezoning three lots from single-family residential to multifamily residential located on the northeast corner of 26th Avenue and 10th Street. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is a recommendation from the planning commission to rezone this piece of property from single-family residential to multifamily residential.
All right, so someone on council like to offer that for a first reading? I will offer that for a first reading. 8B1 is a resolution authorizing our mayor's office to execute a supplemental funding agreement for the Tuscaloosa Metro Animal Shelter. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. This authorizes the mayor to enter a revised agreement with Tuscaloosa County and the city of Tuscaloosa concerning the metro animal shelter. As, Mr. President, you're aware, you're on the joint task force. This expands the metro animal shelter to the adjacent Community Corrections Building, and is going to be improved by the three governments in three phases. The initial cost to the city of Northport will be slightly less than 10% or $15,810.
All right, thank you. Again, I served on that board for 18 months and a lot of hard work, and I think the citizens and taxpayers are getting a, a really, really good funding agreement with three governments working together. So very, very pleased to see this on the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing our mayor's office to execute a supplemental funding agreement for the Tuscaloosa Metro Animal Shelter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none to report. Item 10 is public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item 11, city administrator's business. Mr. Rose?
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to, as, as staff knows and most of you know, I have withdrawn my name and to be a candidate for city administrator. And I just wanna thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to work with you hand in hand. And I have four little ones that are nine and under, and you know, this weekend, I was at peace, and my wife told me yesterday that this is the most pleasant I've been in seven months. So I just thank y'all for the opportunity for the last six months.
Thank you, Joseph. Item 12, departmental business. We have none to report. Item 13 is public comment. We have two citizens. First one, Mr. Steven Schwab. Mr. Schwab, how are you doing?
Good.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Steven Schwab, 2525th Street in Northport. I just want to add in part my voice to the expressions of sympathy over the tragedy and the tragic loss of our councilman Dennis Hambright. I understand that according to state law, there will not be a special election. Am I correct in assuming that?
I will say this, and please, I'm not saying this to be mean, but I will get you that, but at this point, I don't even wanna talk about a special election and all that. We just, and I'm saying that with utmost respect to you as a citizen. Let me just make that as a caveat. When the time comes, Mr. Schwab, we will send the information out, but right now, we are just, I, I really, really, really think that it's in bad taste. That's just my opinion.
Okay, well, I...
And I will get you that information. I just think it's in bad taste, but you, I mean, I'm just, I'm just one person, and I'm not saying that to be rude, mean, or...
I understand.
We just lost a colleague, and I'm just, I really, that is a million miles away.
Well, I, I just want to say that I sincerely hope that however the process of selection proceeds, that whoever is chosen will be responsive, as responsive to the concerns of the constituents as Mr. Hambright was.
Thank you. Duly noted, and, and I will agree. I think they got some big shoes to fill whoever the, you know, council decides, so...
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chuck Gerdow. Thank you, Chuck. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Chuck Gerdow. I live at 3909 Northwood Lake Drive West in Northport. I have a few comments, and if I go over three minutes, stop me or let me go. So I just wanna say a few things about Dennis Hambright, and especially to his family. He's a great guy. He was one of, I've had probably five best friends my whole life, and he's one of them. He's a great guy, and he will be missed. Since the news about Dennis's passing came last Thursday, the last several days have been difficult for his family, his friends, and Northport city officials and staff, former coworkers, union friends from Goodrich, members of the Tuscaloosa County High School Alumni Association, who he's very passionate about, and the entire community. One of Dennis's favorite topics of conversation was his grandchildren. He loved them very much. He is very proud of his children, Eric and Taylor. Dennis was the last of his older generation, and his grandparents' parents, his brother Jackie, excuse me, his brother Larry and his sister Jackie passed before him. He was the last of his generation, and he brought that up a lot. And now, they're all gone. We have our own personal and special memories of Dennis, of the work and legacy Dennis leaves with us. As of Wednesday evening, he was working on City of Northport Matters, preparing for an upcoming meeting on Thursday. He was also in an email discussion with the county high alumni board about planning an upcoming fundraising event for scholarships. Even on the last day he was here, he was working, he was working hard. He was working hard for the city, for the alumni, for so many people. Dennis was a man of character, and I'm just gonna give you a couple of character traits about him. First is sincerity. Sincerity is known as eagerness to do what is right with transparent motives. And that's what Dennis did. He did what was right. He was transparent about it. Another Dennis, character of Dennis was determination. Determination is known as purposing to accomplish the right goals at the right time, regardless of the opposition. Friends, this is another great picture of who Dennis was. In the book of Leviticus, chapter 25, verse 43, this passage says, "Do not rule over them ruthlessly, but fear your God." This passage refers to placing hard and heavy tasks and burdens upon workers and employees. This passage very much reflected Dennis's values in and for the workplace, and how he was an advocate for employees, not only during his union days at Goodrich, but also his short time here on the city council. And let me tell you a little quick story about Dennis and myself. And seven years ago, we were, the old county high school's about to be torn down, and a group of us went up there on a Saturday afternoon. I'd never met Dennis in my life, didn't know who he was. And I saw this guy out there with a megaphone, and he was just hollering at folks. He says, we're gonna save this building, we're gonna save it. Okay. I like this guy's determination. Now, he wasn't gonna save the building, okay? Wasn't gonna happen. It was probably a little too far gone, but he certainly tried. That day, we documented all histories of people, former teachers, principals, Mr. Walker was there, but yet Dennis was yelling in that microphone, let's save this building. But I am certain of a couple of things. Dennis would have wanted us all to be here today with the happiest of thoughts of the time spent together. Dennis is still here with us, very strong in spirit. Dennis, we will miss you. And as a friend of many of us, another friend of mine named Kenneth Walters, many of you know him, he stood right up here several times, talking about all kinds of things, most of it to do with the city and some not. But one of his favorite sayings was, "Keep hope alive." Dennis, we're gonna do just that. We're gonna keep hope alive in memory and honor of you, and we'll keep doing our best here in the city of Northport. Thank you for your time this evening.
14, item 14 is mayor and councilmember's business. Under my business, I know Mr. Rose has expressed just an appreciation for the city and the city council and the citizens for entrusting, you know, that position as city administrator under his watch, and we just appreciate him a lot, giving up a lot of his time away from his family. And of course, when you do something well, sometimes you have to make a choice, and of course, he, you know, he made the choice for his family, which we totally understand. But it's, you know, with that being said, I know council has, we still have the job of the business of the city to do, and a good, good note of my friend Dennis, who's an employee, who's an employee employee, we still gotta keep this thing running. I, I hope that we can kind of move forward, I guess, in terms of our, you know, inter-office staff, putting together some pieces in terms of the city administrator's position. So that being said, if it pleases mayor or council, I'd like to, in light of Mr. Rose's resignation, I'd like to appoint, or hereby name Bruce Higginbotham, as our city administrator with an interim tag. And of course, that will also encompass the, which is non-civil service, of course, but the city administrator, which will be interim, the interim city clerk, the interim city treasurer, and the interim appointing authority. Again, also putting to this as a motion that the employee Bruce Higginbotham continue in the current civil service position of city engineer. And again, the interim tag will be on the city administrator's positions and its, and its hat, so to speak, proper. Of course, Mr. Rose, during the transition, will need to be kind of hand in hand with Bruce until he can get a feel for, you know, what we had coming on, what's, what's down the pipe. So we don't wanna put anybody out in the cold and make sure that staff understands that we do, we're gonna keep this thing rolling. And of course, they asked the mayor to negotiate the salary involved in making that interim city administrator position work. So, and hopefully, by passage of the resolution, it's gonna become effective immediately. So with all that being said, it's about four or five points. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
New business. Item 8A1 is a first reading of an ordinance declaring the sales tax holiday or the back-to-school holiday again. We've always taken part in this, and out of Ms. Hoffman's office, it moved from in August to the third full weekend in July, so they moved it up a little bit. Is that correct, Ms. Hoffman?
Correct.
All right. There's no, there's no action needed, but I will offer this up for a first reading on item 8A1. Item 8A2 is a first reading of an ordinance annexing 13 acres between Kerwood-Lakewood Drive and Sleepy Valley Road. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, this is a recommendation from the planning commission to annex 13 acres on the east side of 69 between Kerwood-Lakewood Drive and Sleepy Valley Road. The current request is annexation only, but it's potentially for residential development.
All right. Is there someone on council like to offer that up for a first reading?
I'll offer that up for a first reading.
Offered up by Councilman Davis. Item 8A3 is a first reading of an ordinance rezoning three lots from single-family residential to multifamily residential located on the northeast corner of 26th Avenue and 10th Street. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is a recommendation from the planning commission to rezone this piece of property from single-family residential to multifamily residential.
All right, so someone on council like to offer that for a first reading? I will offer that for a first reading. 8B1 is a resolution authorizing our mayor's office to execute a supplemental funding agreement for the Tuscaloosa Metro Animal Shelter. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. This authorizes the mayor to enter a revised agreement with Tuscaloosa County and the city of Tuscaloosa concerning the metro animal shelter. As, Mr. President, you're aware, you're on the joint task force. This expands the metro animal shelter to the adjacent Community Corrections Building, and is going to be improved by the three governments in three phases. The initial cost to the city of Northport will be slightly less than 10% or $15,810.
All right, thank you. Again, I served on that board for 18 months and a lot of hard work, and I think the citizens and taxpayers are getting a, a really, really good funding agreement with three governments working together. So very, very pleased to see this on the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing our mayor's office to execute a supplemental funding agreement for the Tuscaloosa Metro Animal Shelter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is consent agenda. We have nine items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training for various employees, and appeal requisition for, from our PD department. Again, these were expressed and specified in our pre-meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Uh, again, also putting to this as a motion that the employee Bruce Higginbotham continue in the current civil service position of city engineer. And again, the interim tag will be on the city administrator's positions, and it's, and it's uh, hat, so to speak, proper. Um, of course, Mr. Rose during the transition will need to be kinda hand-in-hand with Bruce until he can uh, get a feel for, you know, what we had coming on, what's, what's down the pipe, so. We don't wanna put anybody out in the cold and, and make sure that staff understands that we do, we're gonna keep this thing rolling, and of course, they ask the mayor to negotiate uh, the salary involved in making that interim city administrator position work. So, and, and hopefully, by passage of the relu- resolution, it's gonna become effective immediately, so. With all that being said, it's about four or five points, that's in the form of a motion, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. One more item under my business, I know Bruce, um, can you give us a quick update on our MLK project, I know everybody, I've had a few calls about it from our residents. But I do wanna make sure that everybody understands that it's a marathon and not a sprint, just because we got kicked back three or four years uh, in this project, so last time we talked, uh, you know, we had some public involvement meetings a couple of years back. Uh, we're, we're to the point now where the council has decided to do the project, and Bruce, if you'll give us a quick update where we are and what we need to do moving forward?
The consultant is still on schedule to uh, have the public involvement meeting, I think it's the last required public involvement meeting, um, early summer to midsummer. So, um, what they are doing at this point is um, preparing the scope to, to finish the environmental study and the design that will come from that uh, public meeting that they have this summer. That will kinda dictate the final stages of the project, so, in reality, you're probably looking at, at, if it's two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, as far as construction, talking to landowners and things like that.
Correct. And again, public involvement meeting, we only have to have one to satisfy the environmental justice portion.
You've had a few at this point, so um, to the best of my knowledge, you have one remaining.
Gotcha, alright, so, again, for those who may or may not be affected, it's a marathon, not a sprint, city's working hard on our end, uh, we'll probably hopefully have a design ready after we have that last public involvement meeting. But again, this is kinda at the, at the mercy of us having to stop the project and restart it, but again, this council, uh, a lot of leadership, they said move forward with it, so. Midsummer, we'll have one public involvement meeting, and after that, you should have a design tailored to what the community's wishes are, based on the dollar amounts that we have, and then from there, we'll, we'll start on construction, hopefully, next year or preceding year, so. That's my, that's my status on MLK, uh, and I have no other further business under my district right now, uh, Councilman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just again, I know the mayor will agree, certainly gonna miss our seatmate right here, you know, somebody asked me over the weekend, you know, how close we were, and you know, in this job, you can't help but get close, um, we're such a united group, and you, much time as we spend here, you know, we don't just show up here twice a month and sit up here and do a meeting, it's a lot of work, so. You, you get to know the people and their families, and uh, I tell you what, he's a great guy, certainly gonna miss him. Um, also wanna say uh, to Joseph, thank you for what you've done, uh, for the city, uh, truly appreciate it. Um, certainly a tough job, I think we all understand that, and if you remember, was the first day you came in, y'all were in the accident out uh, on eighty-two, so you've had a, a full plate ever since, and I just wanna tell you, man, I really appreciate everything you've done, and uh, looking forward to continuing to work with you, that's all I have.
Councilman Davis?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I just wanna echo those thoughts, uh, uh, Councilman Sullivan said, uh, you know, my heart goes out, cuz I lost a good friend, and uh, never forget him. He'll always be on my heart and mind, just for his, for his smile and his laugh, what he did for this city, um, I'd like to thank Mr. Rose for stepping up to the plate and, and wearing two hats at one time, it was a, it was a hard job, but he did a good job, and I appreciate that. On a final note, um, I, I've, I've been out of town for about a month, uh, we missed our last projects committee meeting this, this month, but we'll start back up at uh, nine o'clock on, on June twelfth, uh, in the pre-council chamber, so if anyone'd like to come, uh, feel free to come show up, uh, that's at nine o'clock on the twelfth of June, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hogg?
Now, there's, there's no words that, that any of us can say that will reflect what Dennis meant to us, um. You know, walking into this room tonight and seeing his empty chair, it really hurt a lot, but I know, uh, as was stated before, uh, Dennis worked all the way until the time that, that he moved on, and uh, I had just spoke with him the night before, and we were gonna have a meeting together, probably over some type of food, but we were gonna, we were gonna discuss, and uh, a- and had some things that, that him and I were working on, and I looked, I looked forward to those type of meetings, um, Rodney said, you, you really get to know someone uh, sitting in this position, it's not just two nights out of the month. Really work hard, because every one of the council has the, the betterment of the city at heart, and uh, there was no one person on this council, such as Dennis, that, that always had that initiative, so. Uh, to his family, I know I've e- expressed to you numerous times throughout the day, but there's, there's nothing else I can say that that will express my gratitude for your father and sharing him with us, and uh, we will always have good memories and uh, try to do our best as we move forward to uh, do the things that would make Dennis happy, so, and then, as for Joseph?
He'll go over the, the interim city administrator job. I too have four children, I thought you were crazy then, so, uh, I, I total, I totally understand where you're coming from, and uh, you know, you can't, you can't take away um, and take back the time that you missed with your children, so, uh, make sure you, make sure you get out, do some stuff this week, take, take a load off, I'm sure your wife is gonna love seeing you around a little bit more now, so, uh, we do appreciate it, that's all I have, Jay.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Aaron?
I too am going to reflect as far as Dennis is concerned, and it is tough to get where you're next to this interesting city. Having done dealing with him as a teenager, he has always been a kind, thoughtful citizen, and he has learned to love-
Of each other up here, we are true to a family, I think this is about his perseverance, and that thing has been, uh, this last twenty-six, twenty-nine, it's been so long, it's been so short, we've been working so hard. There's never been anybody that's- Had a cross word with one another that I know? They have, they kept it committed, but that's not so, and they did, and, um, I'm open enough to be your mother's and a lot of your grandmother's, um, everything- I'll be taught, so I feel it- Every one of us, yeah, um, every day, but he's always there, I appreciate it, nothing but him as a daughter, and as a member of this council, I think he has incredible influence, if nobody does it, he's holding it together, and that is why I always feel precious. Joseph? I cannot tell you how much I appreciate it, but you have, um, stepped up quite, you've, um, an insurmountable job, um, you're most precious of the day. I don't know if anybody that he has worked at Northport, and he loves to pass and he's willing to take on the challenges, but he did, with two baby names, John, and when I say the name, I'm telling you, he did it in his studies twenty-four seven. And I am guilty, I think I hope this gentleman is guilty, of never giving him a moment at all, I'm twelve, three point time, and, uh, no, didn't, he was- About trying to fish with his children. And, um, really wasn't like that. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. But it's just that he has found a phenomenal job, and I am very appreciative of that, and I'm just picking up, but, and I want to thank Rose, and being willing to take on this job, and for what he's bringing up with the city. He may not have realized what he's a great to do, but we're proud of him, stand behind him, and Joseph will stand behind him too, Joseph is a team player, just, there's anybody that would ever, if he was not- So much as far as this city, if people do not believe in him, and probably would not be a protective thing to actually do this to him.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I actually, um, I wanted to call Mr. Rodney Pelt up, I know Mr. Pelt actually was in our pre-meeting, and I wanted to make sure he has enough time, and I did not give him uh, public comment, and that was uh, my error, so Mr. Pelt, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, uh, council president, council members, I just came back to address the council and who didn't hear, we was in here about. Uh, first, my name is Rodney Pelt, I'm the CEO of Mind Changers Incorporated, it's a nonprofit here, based in, in uh, the county of Tuscaloosa County, and we venture throughout the city and the county, and throughout western Alabama with high-level mentoring and community outreach in underserved communities. And myself, along with, well, Mind Changers along with Para, has partnered to do a One Tuscaloosa event on May twenty-seventh, starting at ten o'clock, and what One Tuscaloosa is, with all the divisiveness and with all the uh, uh, split in the community, split in um, way people lives, we're so busy, we're so doing things, we're not, we're not together, so we just decided to try to bring back the count, bring back the county uh, together. People get to know their neighbors, get to know people you work with, people you're next to, and just put everybody together in one place, so we can just level on each other and just be a family-friendly community. And uh, it encompass uh, bouncers, games, music, food trucks, uh, just a whole day of fun on May twenty-seventh at Snow Hen Park from ten to one. If you like, if, more information, you can just email me at mindchangesone.com, and um, the theme is caring together, sharing together, serving together, succeeding together, cuz we all know we gotta live here together. So why not just have a happy day all together, so, thank you for this opportunity, Councilman, uh, President Jay, and Councilman, we appreciate it, thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna leave this with you.
Thank you, Rodney, I'll make sure if we had some more, we may put them up around city hall, some more information, so, very good event. Item fifteen is uh, adjournment, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.